All right, everyone, welcome. Tonight is Monday, September 16th, 2024. This is a study session of the Minnetoka City Council. I'll call the meeting to order and we will start with introductions. And Miranda, we'll start with you and go around and then we'll have our guests introduce themselves and then we will get at the agenda, so.
Yeah, Miranda, I'm an Assistant City Manager.
Mike Bunk, City Manager.
Patsy Foster-Bolton, Ward 2.
Paula Romailly, Ward 3.
Rebecca Shack, Ward 2.
Brad Reesum, Mayor.
Kizzy Copey, Ward 4.
Deb Calvert, City Council at Large, Seat A.
Jace Alexander, Senior Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Coordinator.
Sarah Soffol, Senior Management Coordinator.
Will Manchester, Public Works Director.
Julie Wishnak, Community Development Director.
Kelly O'Dea, Recreation Director.
Sally Bressler, I live in Ward 2. I'm a member of the Minnetoka Community Housing Team.
Cindy Rich, also a member of the Community Housing Team. I also live in Ward 2.
Kevin Ringhopper, also live in Ward 2, the Minnetoka Community Housing Team.
Gerald Gershom, Minnetoka resident with Friends of Minnetoka Parks and Friends of Cullin Nature Preserve.
Angela Marrera, I'm also a resident of Minnetoka, also in Friends of Minnetoka Parks and Cullin Nature Preserve.
Linda Russell, Minnetoka resident, Friends of Minnetoka Parks and Friends of Long Lake Park.
John Maraca, resident and I'm Board Chair at Friends of Minnetoka Parks.
Oops, well, I think, at the very end.
I'm David Allen and I live on Hidden Valley Road about two miles from here.
Very good. Welcome, everyone. So we've got introductions done, so we'll get to business items. And Item 3A is the Met Council Imagine 2020-50 Plan Update. And is that, Mike, is that you or Julie?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. Just tee it up real quickly for Julie. Again, for our guests, we are informal here today, so we don't usually do by Mr. and Miss. So with Julie Wishnak presenting here tonight on the Imagine 2050 Update. Just a couple of things that were noted in the staff report. Now, this is your opportunity as a council to help staff draft a response if you feel there's a response that is needed to the Met Council. As you know, we're in our current Met Council plan, the 20... Well, it's called the... It's always kind of confusing because it's called the...
I have a whole slide on it.
Got a whole slide on this. So I'll just say we're in the current... The current plans are 2040 Plan, which was developed in 2018 or approved in 2018. And that really operationally takes us from 2018 to 2028, which is then called the 2040 Plan. Met Council is now gearing up for then the new revision or the new comp plan for all cities. And I think, Council, you're aware that all cities in the seven-county metro require to do a comprehensive plan. I guess I can go into Julie's background slide. Because as we're in this current... As we gear up for the next plan, it is to be approved by the Met Council in 2028 through 2038, but that's called then the 2050 Plan. And so really to kind of tease this out today, staff has had some presentations that both Julie and I've heard from Met Council staff. I think some of the council members may have heard a presentation from Met Council staff at a recent Metro Cities Policy Adoption Committee. And then this is all out there on the Met Council website. And I think for those that maybe clicked on the link in the staff report, it takes you to the Met Council website and it's... It's not very concise. It's kind of all over the place. It's hard to really kind of interpret really what Met Council is proposing. What staff has done in our report for you this evening is really looked at three items that we want to call to your attention. And really, I think what Julie wants to flesh out with you, Council, is here are some observations we have as staff. Do you share those same observations? And then to what extent do you want to submit a letter to Met Council? And that is due on October 7th. So with that, I really want to turn it over to Julie with kind of the three major observations that we've seen as staff in the Met Council 2050 pre-planning process. So with that, thank you, Council, and then turn it over to Julie.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. I think you covered this slide pretty well. Again, Imagine 2050, that's what we're working on. And the previous plan was called Thrive. I think also, in addition to understanding kind of the regional framework, it's hard to understand where does the city planning process come into play? And I think this is the best way to understand it. So a lot of activities have been going on with the Metro Council. They've been doing a lot of outreach. If you've had an opportunity to look at their website, they kind of document all of the conversations they've been having, the meetings they've been having over the last year, year and a half. Then they spend a lot of time in late '23 and '24 doing the policy drafting. I do sit on the local planning, I would call it Local Planners Group, that kind of bets some of this information before it gets out to the public. But I would say just I get a heads up before it's released. And then if there's any glaring things that we believe should be clarified, we make those recommendations for it to come out. So I felt pretty comfortable with what was said on the Metro Council's website because I had seen a lot of the data before. But at the end here, you can see they want to adopt in '25 and implement in '26. That's where the city process comes in of developing its own comprehensive plan that meets the regional framework. Again, that process takes, oh, two years. That's probably a good estimate. The last time, I'd say it took us a really good two years. We had a lot of things to study and we had a lot of meetings and a lot of outreach and that took time. So it can take a while. There's sometimes meeting fatigue when we do that. So just a reminder, what we're doing is trying to get ready for October 7th. There's public input required. There's two ways you can do it. One is a letter, but also there's an online portal that you can do by section. So if you want to do land use notes, you put it in, you know, the land use portal. If you want to go to housing, you put it in there. So it just depends on how complicated your questions or your issues are and I'll... We'll choose how to do that based on the conversation tonight. So on the top of this chart, it tells you about what the regional forecast looks like. And it gives you the different decades, the 2020 all the way through 2050. And you can see some of that growth. If you read more about the demographic shift, what's going on, it is a slower economic time. They do predict that slower growth in land use and changes in land use and housing over the next couple of decades. So that is showing up in the numbers that you're seeing. For Minnetoka specifically, the population growth expected between 2020 and 2050. And remember, these numbers kind of range around. So when we talk about housing, we've got a different couple of decades to deal with. So 2020 to 2050, population growth would be about 16,000 people. It would be a growth of about 8,000 households or units of housing. And then employment growth is expected to be about 13,500. So if you use some math, the growth that's forecasted here is about 260 units a year. And really, if you look back at what we've been doing over the last 10 years, we've been building at about 436 units a year. So that's like almost half of what we've been doing. So that doesn't concern us as planners. However, on the employment side, we do believe 13,000 seems a little strong. I think we had a question today about employment and how do they count teleworkers and all of that. Wherever your paycheck comes from, whatever city, so you work for United Health Group and you're based in Minnetoka, that check, wherever that paycheck's coming from, that's considered where you're employed. Doesn't matter if you work at home five days a week, that's where you're considered an employed person. We think it's a little strong for a variety of reasons. We know that vacancy is pretty strong in our office market. We're actually doing an update to that right now, trying to figure out how vacant are we just in Minnetoka? And a lot of it has to do with, you know, the telecommuting, but some of it has to do with consolidation of office space. We don't believe that will be over or that kind of hump of vacancy for another 10 years. That will affect population of employment. So it's an important point. You might go, oh, why do we care so much about employment? Well, when we're planning for road projects and infrastructure and PM, Peak Hour, trip generation and all of that stuff, that number is really important. So it's not just housing that we look at, it's the employment numbers. So that can really affect some of the regional improvements that are considered by the city. So might not seem like a big deal, but is something I probably would point out to the Metro Council or at least have them respond. Minnetoka is known as a suburban city. There's also urban, urban edge, suburban edge, rural center, rural residential, blah, 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 blah. It goes on and on. In that land use, and it's specifically talking about density, they're recommending a seven units per acre density. Now, when I say that, there's instant confusion, okay? The instant confusion is, ah, the city is only guided up to four units per acre, right? Because you went to low density in your head, a lot of people have. That's not what they're talking about. We're talking about overall, how is the city going to develop into 2050? So I want to show you some numbers about... First, I'll put some disclaimers and then I'll show you some numbers. The density that they're talking about is a net density, okay? The numbers I'll show you are gross because I didn't have all the time to do all the homework. So we'll get to that when we do our comprehensive plan, but I'll show you some gross numbers. I already said the second point and then the overall. And then so the historical context I want to give you is the last 10 years, what's been happening in Minnetoka. So overall, in all unit types, we average about 12.67 units per acre. If you netted out wetlands, floodplain, roads, I mean, that's about a quarter of the acreage, so you'd be more like 17 units per acre. So let me go back to this chart. 17 units per acre is almost like an urban edge type development pattern, but we're considered a suburban development. Again, something to reflect on in this slide is 3,800 units of multifamily have been built in this city over the last 10 years. Not as much in the townhome category, with very little townhome activity. You can kind of see it now, we're starting to get more proposals on townhome. We have not been there for a long time. Very little construction. About 400 single family, just a note on the single family, we're using just a general... I didn't go up and look 400 permits up, so the lot sizes, we just went on a two-unit-per-acre density. You do have higher densities than the single-family area, but just for ease of math, again, all of these numbers would inflate your density per acre. If you wanted to look at just how much have we constructed in the last few, five years, it'd be like 514 units a year. If you looked at 10 years, we average 427. All that being said, we did all that homework to tell you, and in the report I just did one year, but I knew in my gut that this was not an issue. Minnetoka would have to be concerned about seven units an acre is just not an issue for the kind of development we're seeing. Now, if you were in a, I would say, a community that had only housing, single-family housing being built, it might become more of an issue. You might get closer to some of the seven units per acre just because of you don't have that multifamily to offset or provide the density that the Met Council is looking for. So I think that's a non-issue for Minnetoka. To give you perspective about what's happening, again, we're looking backwards. How many households were built in the suburban designated communities? About 15,000. So we're about a quarter of what construction was over the last 10 years. So that's a pretty strong part of the housing solution, if you will. I did put a link, actually, I think I might have provided a capture of it. It might be on my next slide. The last part I want to talk about is housing. And a lot of the things that they talk about in the goals and policies are contained in various documents that the city has. Current comprehensive plan talks a lot about the same things that the housing policy talks about at the Met Council. There's also notes in the EIP about programmatic things that we want to do as a city, again, reflecting much of what they're talking about. And then, of course, your strategic plan talks about housing. So there's a couple of areas you already deal with, a lot of the things they identified. I think this was a little bit harder to understand. Okay, go with me for a minute. Allocation of need is only a 10-year timeframe. So when you're talking about 7,900 units to be constructed by 2050, they're estimating that in the first 10 years of that number of units constructed, half of them would have to be affordable. So 1,300 units would have to be affordable. So I think that's a little daunting, especially if you look at the category that they're talking about is 30% AMI. We all know that is the hardest and most difficult AMI to grasp and capture. We've gotten down to the 40s with some of our projects, but if you're having a wholesale change in housing to get 30%, you're going to need different funding sources. Tax credits aren't there for cities like Minnetoka. If you look at the funding criteria, I've been advocating for changing how they do the funding criteria because we're not in a qualified census tract. There's a lot of stuff that goes along with it, but the way they score applications in Minnetoka never does well. And so we sit and wait and wait. And once in a while, we'll get the last project that's a tax credit with Dominion's project in Opus. That's the last time we received tax credit allocation. So the comment here is unless funding significantly changes for affordable housing specifically to 30%, there's not a lot of traction the city can do on its own. We can try to piece together different projects, get a few 30%'s here and there, but we're not going to get...
752.
752. Right. So that, that one, I will mention that in the comments, that that is going to be a hard number to hit. Doesn't ma... I mean, it's a good goal to have, it's just, and we need that. It's not, I'm not saying that. The point is that executing and implementing is going to be a really big challenge. So I'll end it here. If you had any questions... Oh, one thing, I'm sorry, one more thing on housing. There was a link in the document that showed production of affordable housing throughout the region. So I think it was 20, 2090 units per year of affordable housing being created. That actually is, we're doing that, doing that work. I thought that was helpful for you to see the whole region. So with that, Mayor, I'll turn it back to you for these questions, which is about the policies themselves or does the city have any concerns about the draft comments that staff has identified?
All right. Thank you, Council. I frequently, Julie coaches me and says, well, don't ask for questions, but I think she's asking for questions now.
Not tonight. No, tonight's all about questions.
Do you have any questions, Kizzy?
I did. One of the questions, I had talked to Mike about this. How many 30% homes have we had in Minnetoka in the last, I guess, five years? Have we had any? Because I have, I don't remember really saying that we've had any 30%.
New construction 30%?
Yes.
Not in 10 years, no. Have we rehabbed 30%? Yes. And have we provided funding for 30%? Yes.
Well, the funding, I'm just wondering, like, Minnetoka Heights, they have some apartments in there down to 30%. So different apartments throughout the city may have, especially the older ones, may have some 30%, but not...
Those are project-based housing.
Right.
Not vouchers. There are vouchers in this community as well, but not, those are Section 8-based.
So is that how we get into 30%? Are you counting that?
No, it's a variety of ways. I mean, Section 8, project-based 30% units are some, that's one way. Another way is tax credits. Another way is tax credits and TIF. Another way is just TIF, but very seldom can you make a project work for 30% on TIF alone. That just, you've got to match it with some other funding source.
So with Met Council saying 752 units, I mean, are we able to get any? If we haven't had none in the last 10 years, how do we get to any?
Right.
And so what are some ways?
Yeah, I think you can get there perhaps, maybe, if you got a few of your units on a mixed-use project to be 30%. Like I said, we got down to 40% with a project, but we haven't been able to get to 30% because sometimes 30% depends. They need services to go with it or there's complementary services supporting that housing that go with that unit. So sometimes that's the barrier to providing 30%, but it just depends. I think you could probably consider a housing policy change that maybe they don't have as many units, but they drop the AMI. You can do that in your housing policy. That'd be one way. But you're not going to create that many doing it that way. It's going to be drips and dribbles, right?
Other questions? Rebecca? Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Kimberly.
You're behind Kizzy's head, I'm sorry. Kimberly.
Let me lean back a little bit.
Hi, Kimberly Wilburn, Minnetoka City Council at Large. Apologies for being late, had a minor family thing to take care of. And so apologies if you already covered this, but could you explain the plans, like why the 2050 Plan starts in 2028 and only lasts 10 years? Like the naming and the timing and all of that stuff?
Well, I'm not sure I have a good answer, other than, other than it's required every 10 years, right? That's just the cycle. And then for cities to catch up with the regional framework. And I would say, I mean, this is my, I hate to say it, it's my third time doing this, so it's my third, 30 years in, I'm third decade into this. I would say this is the strongest I've seen the regional framework than ever in the past. You know, Thrive was pretty good. I mean, it was getting to some of the more difficult issues of the region. The time before that, it was not as verbose and as specific as this. So I would say it just gets better and better and that requires time. And then that elongates the timeframe in which we've got the regional framework and then get the city's plans done. So I don't, other than the state law, I don't know.
Okay, so I did talk about this with Mike some. So the thinking is that this 2050 Plan, which will start in 2028, will be for outcomes in 2050? Is that correct?
Correct.
That's where the 2050 comes from?
The way I like to describe it, and I'm going to read from this, it's, yes, you have a 10-year update. It's looking at a 30-year horizon. We're looking, trying to look out 30 years ahead, but it's really, by the time we adopt it, it's only 22 years left of that planning horizon, if that makes any sense. So by the time we get to it, the region has their framework. They know what they're doing for the next 30 years. How we're implementing that locally comes a little later, so. But if you think about planning horizon and not so much about what year we adopted versus them, and it just is easier in my brain to say it's a 30-year high-timing planning horizon. What they don't make easy, though, is some of these numbers go back and forth. Sometimes you're talking about a 20-year number, sometimes you're talking about a 30-year number. So you have to be careful when you look at this data. Make sure you know what decade you're looking at because it can get really confusing, especially on the housing side, because that's only 10 years of allocation.
Other questions? Rebecca?
Thanks, Brad. But so I have two questions. One, I found the website and trying to, like, it kept saying draft and I was having a hard time really putting my fingers on, finger on a lot of the, what I would consider a draft.
Plan.
Clicked around a lot. So I mean, I would give that as a general feedback.
Bummer.
If there's something a little more clear on what exactly are we...
Commenting.
Commenting on, I think that would be helpful just organizationally.
Got it.
But, you know, I think we did the best we could with what we had. So if we're, you know, we, so Cargill and Medica and these companies that have hybrid employment, I mean, they're all still here, right, in Minnetoka? And so by the way they're counting employees, presumably we've retained those employees, whether they're coming to the city or not. I mean, is there, I think about the surveying that's being, that we're doing, you know, that the 494 Quarter Commission's doing and some of this data that's kind of floating around out there. Is that being used in developing these projections or is, I mean, how do we kind of, in this new world, how are we doing the projections? The same way we've always done it or...
Yeah, well, they have a whole information. Actually, I'm going to pass this out because I think there are a few questions about how the region gets to its forecasting. I think I have a few extra for the audience members. But in the back, it talks about employment. They, they're charged slowing their growth. They look at past employment, they look at regional employment, who's in our region, who's getting, you know, expansions, that sort of thing. They look backwards and then they try to predict. But I would say it's less clear on the employment side than it is on the population. Population is very easy to follow, how their methodology works. But employment is, I think it's harder to forecast, I do. And this whole teleworking thing hasn't helped. But I always think about it as what is, what is the impact to the regional system?
Right.
What does it impact to sewer? What is the impact to water? What is the impact to roads and all of the capacity issues? Not so much, you know, how did they figure out the number? We're dealing with, like, what's happening in this community?
And then I'll just quickly, I mean, I agree on the, on the 30% AMI. Like I told Mike, I'm going to, I'm going to change what I told Mike earlier. I said, well, I can say I want a billion dollars. I don't actually want a billion dollars. I can say I want $100 million and that's great. And we could say we want 800 units of new 30% AMI, but unless this is a systemic goal, it just, it seems even counterproductive because it's like, you know, when you see, sometimes when you see all the numbers.
High in the sky, kind of.
So I would, you know, I don't know if they can find a way to handle that. And I'm like, we need this, but our realistic goals are this.
Or we can get there through this, right? Yeah. Got it.
She's first.
Okay.
Thank you, Julie.
Yes.
Two questions to kind of follow up on that. What, first of all, what does staff feel, or do you have an appropriate number that you feel is a better projection than one is provided? Or are you just going to...
Unemployment? Yeah. I would say less than 10,000 or, or, you know, I looked at some of the other communities around here. I don't think Hopkins had 1,000 maybe. So I was just trying to kind of compare and contrast, but I would say at least 4,000 to 5,000 drop I would ask for, just so it seemed more tangible to me.
Okay. And then, I mean, following up on Rebecca's comment, I mean, to me, the 30%, again, we can ask and have all the aims we want unless we have funding and support for doing this, either funding or credits or some sort of major programmatic change. Does staff see any way that this is even remotely possible at this point? Unless we come up with a new housing model, a program, you know, we have dorms for people, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I do think there are things on the horizon that make housing, I mean, the mayor and I have talked about modular construction. That, that can cut down the costs, although then you're offsetting it with some of the sustainability stuff. So it's kind of, over the long term, that's more affordable for the, the end user, but when the initial construction comes through, we don't, you know, that's not there yet. It's not even. I think that changing the tax credit program federally would help. It's not something the state can do. State can influence it, but I don't think it's the only way to address it. And then thirdly, some of the ways in which affordable housing are evaluated for funding, and that can be anybody from Met Council to Hennepin County to the state or wherever you're getting the funds from. They just seem to consider places like Minnetoka that are, are doing well, we're obviously strong in construction. Why is that funding not flowing as well to a place like Minnetoka? So I think changing the dynamic on how projects are evaluated. But if those three things happen, I do think we can, I mean, I'm amazed what we just did, right? 3,300 units of housing in the last 10 years of multifamily and 30 some, 35% of it's affordable. I mean, that's amazing. I didn't, if you asked me 10 years ago... I didn't, if you asked me 10 years ago, no. That was possible. But you changed a lot of your rules. You changed your policies. We got some excitement about some of these projects. So I think things can shift, but these are really big shifts, right?
Yeah, I mean, and how many more opuses are we going to have?
Exactly.
Well, they're not going to give us any more land. We know that.
Yeah, that's true, too.
But also, you know, these are really big shifts, but it seems like affordable housing is a shift in this country, too. I mean, you know what I mean? Like, it's a big, big problem. But my questions were going to be like, what have they been in the past?
What has the allocation?
What has the number, yeah?
Let's see. We've surpassed it, for sure.
Okay, in the 30% range, that's what I actually.
30%? That's always a, you know, it's always a high number. We can never get there. But in the last cycle, they actually took away the stratification of the AMIs. So they didn't use 30, 50, 60. They just said anything under 80. And so it was a little bit different how they were tracking it from the last ban of housing affordability. So they use life cycle and affordable housing. Those are the two terms they used. They went back to the banding in this banding stratification, whatever you want to call it. So this is, we're back to where we were in the two cycles ago.
Okay, so we don't even know how to measure.
Oh, we do. I mean, we absolutely know what we built in the last.
Right.
Yeah.
But I mean, there's, because it's like, where did they get the number, 700 and some? That's what I wanted.
Well, that's a whole nother class. That's allocation of need.
But I mean, like.
There is a whole formula. So there is a, there is a study of what was needed in the region. And then based on the geography of what the metropolitan area was, 181 communities. And then everybody's allocation of need is documented. And there's a formula about how they got there. But I'm serious, it's quite a presentation.
Right, so it's not the same, obviously, for every?
No, absolutely not. It's not the same.
Okay.
So they look at your population growth and your household growth, and then the need of the region.
Right.
That's about as simple as I can say it.
Are there?
So are they going to lower that number, do you think, with your?
No.
They won't.
No. But I think what I'll say, I don't think, though, they don't redo the allocation of need. And by the way, when this is done, they'll actually send each community the official allocation. So sometimes about the timing. So the first thing that happens is we get our system statement. Then we look at our system statement. Then we get our housing allocation statement. Then we, and so there's more iterations of this data than right now. So we'll continue to respond to the regional system statements that come out. So I was going to say that this isn't our last chance to say something. But I think, I'm trying to keep a pretty broad, major stuff has to happen if you expect us to build this.
I see, yeah, right.
Mike, you wanted?
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Go ahead. I think Mike wanted to say something, but.
Go ahead.
So my question is, like, when they're scoring projects, if we, you know, are there repercussions if we're not to future proj, if we're not doing, you know, meeting their goals, especially for something like 30% AMI, which, you know, we've had projects that came. Yes, we have. That slipped through our fingers for 30% AMI, 13 units, as I recall. And, I mean, that was 13 units of holy, like, which is the Holy Grail.
Right.
Which evaporated. And what are the repercussions if we don't meet? Does it start affecting our score? When they're looking at a city like Minnetoka that already doesn't sort of, you know, rate the kind of funding mechanisms that other cities? How does that work?
Actually, our housing performance score is quite good. And the reason it's quite good is because we do a lot of funding for a lot of different things, and we produce a lot of housing. So always our housing performance score, we're in the top of the region. So that, I never am concerned about that. What, the tax credit program, though, is where that money needs to come from. And that's not the same as the Metropolitan Council's regional policy. So it's a little bit different. It's the state's way in which they dole out the federal tax credits. And that's so much harder to change. And I've got, you know, I've got a few ears there that I share my stories with. I remember, if you remember Shady Oak Road, that apartment project went in for tax credit funding three times and could not get funded. And we ended up with less affordable units there. It's within walking distance of the light rail station. Have you remember?
How do we not?
Quarter mile out of the radius, right? How do we not qualify? So, you know, and so that, that whole kind of scoring system, which is fine, I mean, maybe there are more worthy projects, whatever. And I'm not going to, you know, say our project was better or not, but we had gone in enough. I thought, well, maybe at some point we would get funding. But I think the problem is there's just not enough federal tax credits. And therefore, their hands are tied, and they can't give out more money. So it's, and then that, of course, creates other issues.
So this sounds like a National League, like taking it to the National League in March.
Right.
Mike, did you have, was there a comment you were going to make?
Thank you, Brad. I would say before we get to the questions, I think that's probably the next slide.
Yeah, we got to get there.
Assuming the councils ask their questions. Julie, could you, I don't know if you can pull up if it's Miranda? Just pull up our housing dashboard.
Sure.
And before you answer the questions on like, what position should the city take? Just to put in the context where we stand today with 30% AMI housing.
Sure.
We looked, I looked earlier today with a couple council members. I think we're at like 200 and some units.
Right.
And so, so if we could just put that in the context, Julie, just give you a flavor of, again, where we stand today and how that 752 kind of fits in with where we are today. And then maybe, Julie, I'm going to put you on the spot here. In terms of a potential response, do we?
I got to go up here, sorry.
Also want to comment on how perhaps difficult it is to reach the 30% AMI and look to maybe, instead of 752 and 30%, maybe it's saying that's unattainable to say something more along the fact, we think more could be done in the 50% range, the 60% range. And so I think just showing some of that, well, those numbers will be helpful as well.
And my question for Julie while she's working on this, too, and maybe I'm asking for her to multitask, but.
I'm listening.
We, in the, in the past, we didn't have the stratification. They just had an affordable housing goal, and then they put the stratification in. Could we ask them to take it out? I mean, I, you know, I mean, the irony of Minnetoka is that the greatest need is the part that's the toughest to get. And having a goal that none of us think we can realistically get to unless there is a fundamental paradigm shift on where our money's coming from or how it's going to get done. In my experience in business, having a goal that everyone knows is not going to happen is not good. Having a goal that, boy, if we work hard and stretch, we can. And so my question is, could we take that stratification away the way it was before? Or I think we have to almost flip-flop the numbers in terms of what they've laid on the chart. I'd rather see the low number on the 30% and the other, not because I don't believe in 30%.
It's more realistic.
But it's just not realistic for our city.
All right. So I'm going to answer Kizzy's question first. Because you asked how much in the last 10 years, right?
Yes.
And you can always slide this bar over.
I wanted to know, like, also, like, what it made up? Was it just like, because you said we haven't been able to in the last 10 years, so where is it from?
Right, so this isn't, so this is the last 10 years. I just slid the construction year over. So if you just slide this bar back, you can start seeing where it pops up. So it's older. You can see 28 just went in, 58. And you can see Minnetoka Heights is probably showing up there because it's in the 1970s that was built, you know? So you just move the slider bar, and you can tell what year anything was built and what year most of the affordable housing was built. But if you just reset it, so the answer to your question is it's older 30% naturally, not naturally occurring, but 30% housing. There's still contracts sitting out there. If they didn't have a contract sitting there, we wouldn't call it 30% affordable housing, unless it was contractually that way. Makes sense?
Yeah. That means they're still under those housing tax credit?
Summer housing tax credit, summer HUD project base, summer TIF, summer interesting loans. The city issued them in 1985. We just had one come back. It was, yeah, there was lots of things going on that was trying to build that housing. So what was your question, Mike?
So in terms of along the bottom, so 291 units there. My eyes are getting tested here. Maybe yours are as well. 291 units at 30% AMI.
Right.
754 units at 50% AMI. 2,186 at 60%. And then 131 at 80%. So that's our current composition as it is today.
Over 10 years, right?
No, this is, this is all of them.
Okay, total period, excuse me.
So if you wanted to say all of, so what have we been building in the last 10 years? So those 4,000-ish units of housing. Oop, I got to go to 14. Now look at the dials with the change. We were, we can build all day long in the 60%. 50 is hard, 80% is hard, 30 is nonexistent. Yeah.
And I'm guessing that's true everywhere. Like, you know what I mean? Like 30%, I mean.
Just look at the list who's been getting the tax credit.
But, I mean, it's a more complex, it's more complex now, because we, you know, we live in a city where the median house price in our city is about 500,000. But if you went to build, if you look at the average built house in the last, in the last year, it's not 500, it's 900.
Yeah.
So, you know, there has been no affordable new construction, single-family housing in Minnetoka in years. There have been new houses, but none is affordable.
Well, I mean, even when we talk affordable, when we think about the Mills Church project, that was what, almost $800,000 per unit?
Well, $620,000 a piece, and we're selling them for $234,000. And the difference is taxpayer money.
It is.
You know, that's.
Subsidy.
Yeah, I mean, subsidy. It's just, that's a reality.
Yeah.
And that's not sustainable. To sit there and say for every affordable house we're going to have in Minnetoka, one way, shape, manner, form, taxpayers are going to have to put $400,000 in. Doesn't pass the smell test. So we got to find a better way.
We've veered off the question.
Yeah.
So I'm going to veer you back.
Veer us back, thank you.
I'm going to veer you back. And so really, I think I heard a few things, and I think I can kind of synthesize what you're saying, something about the affordable housing and trying to figure out how to deal with this 30% from a more regional standpoint. I also heard you say you agreed about the employment. I think I heard you say that. And then generally, being okay with the density numbers, right? Did that number surprise you? That we were actually so much higher? No.
No, not really.
Not really.
I mean, I think the key point that you made is, and Mike made, is that it's an average.
Right.
You know, and for a city that's essentially fully developed, the numbers don't really matter because we're so well within the expectation. But I do know, and I've talked to mayors in cities that have a lot of vacant land, and they see that density requirement changing. They're going, holy cow, that fundamentally changes the whole worldview on what our city is going to look like based on what it's looked like in the past. And so that's pretty significant for us. You know, it's probably not a big change.
Yeah, if you're talking to anybody in other cities, I would ask their people, their planners, just do the look back and educate themselves before they make comments, because it clearly isn't an issue here. It's not something we need to have an issue about.
Right.
So if they've got problems with it, they should do maybe some homework and see if it's really an issue, because most cities, it's not. Anyway.
So we've asked questions. And are there any other comments or concerns that council members want to make regarding our draft comments that Julie just summarized?
The only, the only thing that I keep thinking about is this, sort of the effect of remote work and like the employment numbers on, you know, when we go to bat for things like affordable housing or just housing in general, it's very often we're talking about workforce housing and when we're not talking about, you know, adding employees to our city in the numbers that they're projecting. And when we're going, you know, I, it just, it gets very hard to, yeah. And I think, you know, I just wonder where that also fits in the housing projections? If employment and the projected jobs are part of the formula, which I imagine, to a certain extent, might be true. But I do think that those numbers are really ambitious, and I just think that people are starting. I will say that traffic is coming back to normal.
I know, I know, yeah.
But it's still, you know, the workplace is not pre-COVID. It's not the before times yet.
Correct.
Yeah.
I agree. All right, I'll, maybe I'll soften that language a little bit.
I just want to make a comment about the 30%. For me, you know, I've been asking this question forever, and it only took me five years to realize that, no, we haven't had any 30% AMI. No, we're not going to get there unless something drastically changed. So I like what the mayor said, where, for me, I'm a realistic person. I like to say what it is. And what it is, is that we cannot get to the 752, and I think we should make a statement about that, and I think it's, we should do it because it's clear that we can't do it. So then now we can figure out some solutions versus just putting a number that we're never gonna get to. And then we can start putting pressure on Congress, the federal folks who make these federal decisions versus us just making it seem like we're working really hard, which we are, I know that our city is, but we just can't get there. And so it, it, it literally took me five years, like right now, like right, the light bulb just went off. Oh, we're not gonna get there. You know, so I think we should like really state that instead of keep saying, oh, we should get to 30%. I've been saying it for five years, so the light bulb just went off right now.
All right, there you go.
You know, and I just wanna add to what Kizzy said because, and I talked about it a little bit today with Mike. You know, I've worked in business for a long time, and I've always had stretch targets. And if you don't stretch, you don't grow, and I, and I believe that. But I've also been parts of organizations where the plan is so far out of the realm of possibility that people go through the motions because they have to do their jobs, but they know they can't get there, and so they really don't try. And I think that's the, that's the balance. I mean, should we stretch and should it be hard? Absolutely, because what we're talking about is important. But if we put a goal there and live with it, and none of us believes we're gonna get there, in fact, we're certain we're not gonna get there, and we're going through the motions, then we are doing a real disservice, and we're not gonna get everything we could get if we had a realistic goal that we could stretch towards. So, you know, it's, I mean, it's, there's a little double talk in there, but I really think it's important to get these goals right so that we're working on something that we believe we can get to. And, you know, if we're, if we're falling short and we need a little more, I mean, we're gonna be really aggressive about asking, how can we get more if we believe in it? If we don't believe in it, we're probably gonna shrug our shoulders and say, well, let's go work on something else. So I think it's an important point.
Okay, I'll be, I think from all your comments, I'll just be a little bit delicate about how to address that. Obviously, it's needed, but how we get there is just so unclear at this point, and I can say the reasons why.
Right.
Perfect.
Good. Anything else anyone would like to add on that?
Thanks for letting me check in.
Okay, is that, are we, are we good on that topic?
We are, thank you.
All right, so that brings us to the next item, 3B, which is roles and responsibilities for volunteer community interest groups. And, you know, I, I can turn it over to Mike, but I'm, I'm just gonna make a, I'll make a couple of comments because I, I read this, I read our staff report. I know we've gotten some feedback from, from residents and from groups. And this, I think, came up, I mean, none of the things on our agenda are here without the council wanting them here. I mean, so this, this came up, but we, we looked at this a number of time, a number of months ago, and we were, I think, going through a period where staff and council and groups were, were struggling a little bit with input, and it's, it's a, it's a little bit of a challenge, and each of us kind of staying in our lane to a certain degree. Staff does its job, and, and it has its job to do. Council has its job. We have to focus on policy. We don't have to get execution. And then we've got these wonderful volunteer groups who really, really make a difference in our city and really help us from a volunteer perspective. But we all have opinions, and sometimes I think that we get more executional than we should, and we don't stay in our lane, and, and it was creating some dissonance. And I think we've come a long ways from where we were when this was first put on the agenda. So I read the staff report, I talked to Mike, I, I talked to Rebecca, and I thought, you know what, let's have, I don't know if we need to dig into a lot of detail on this. I think we're in so much better a place now than we were maybe when this got popped on the agenda, and I don't wanna cut anybody off on this topic. But I think I'd really kind of like to do a once-over lightly on this because I think we're in a pretty darn good spot in our, our relationships and our, and our working, we're working pretty well. If somebody has a different opinion, I don't wanna cut anybody off, but I also don't wanna get all involved in a lengthy detailed conversation on a problem that is not, won't ever raise its ugly head again, but, but one that we've got largely resolved or solved. So that's my preliminary comment. I don't know if anyone wants to add anything, or Mike, if you have anything you wanna say, but I don't think we need a lot on this, but go ahead, Rebecca.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I'll, I'll just comment, I mean, I talked to Brad today, and I, you know, I had a lengthy conversation with Mike about this. You know, I think this stemmed from a conversation probably that Mike and I had about a year ago. I'm not sure, I think, maybe some, all of us as individual stakeholders, the council, the volunteer groups, and the staff maybe take different components away and, and from about maybe some of the past issues and maybe anticipated issues going forward. I'm not sure that the staff report totally hits on, it, it gets interpreted, I think, by each of these groups of stakeholders maybe a little differently. And I think to Brad's point, maybe digging, we might be doing ourselves a disservice by getting too nuanced at this point on this conversation. I think some of these things have worked themselves out. There's a learning curve for all of us in how things go, and that's not to say nobody's ever gonna do something that somebody might disagree with, myself included. And I think, you know, we, we can afford some grace to folks for that. But my, my inclination would be, honestly, maybe more unintended harmful consequences could come from digging too deep into this conversation today than it, than good, is kind of my thoughts.
So, any other? Go ahead.
I was just gonna ask, so what does that mean? Because right now, we have this information that we were, these questions. So does that mean that we're not gonna answer the question? What does that mean to me, to say that? I don't understand.
Well, what I was, what I was proposing is that, you know, to the point I made earlier, I think, I think we found ourselves after, after some, you know, kind of bumps in the road, we, we found ourselves in a pretty good place, and I think we, everybody gave a little bit, and there was a little bit of a tug and pull. So my thought is we would bypass the discussion questions today, but then if individual council members have some concerns or issues who wanna share those with Mike, it's not to say we'll never, we'll never tackle this, but I, my thought is that we're, we're probably not gonna accomplish a lot in a discussion today, but we don't have to drop it, but I thought we could move on and, and do the other things. And, but if anyone wants, I mean, if there's any concerns that anyone wants to raise now, we can do that. Or the follow-up thing would be to, to work with staff and work with Mike and, and share any thoughts or concerns on how we can improve and, and do better, because we always wanna do better, and, and kind of leave it at that. So that was, I don't know if that answers your question.
That does answer my question, but I feel like if we're gonna do that, then we should remove it from this packet, like we should strike it out or somehow, because if we're not gonna discuss it and we're just gonna let it bypass, to me, that's saying that we're gonna just let it be what's noted, and then we're just gonna allow whatever happens to happen, what's stated in the report. So I think, to me, it just doesn't feel right to just say, let's bypass it, because it's like it's saying we're gonna accept what is said.
I think we could probably have the minutes reflect the comments.
Kind of a tabled?
Yeah.
I mean, again, but go ahead.
So, so like, following up, just to be clear, we're, we're saying, we're not making changes, we're gonna continue doing things the way we've been doing things.
Well, I'd say, I'd say what we, the way we've been doing things lately, I think we've made, I think we've made some significant progress there, and we're not, I mean, we're not making any policy tonight, but the, the question is, do we think that there's any action that needs to be taken? And, and in reality, I think a year ago, when, when this thing first popped up, we were, people were kind of tearing their hair out. There were a lot of issues that we were concerned about. I think we've really made a lot of progress, and that took effort on everyone's part. Staff, volunteer groups, council, and I think we're in a better spot. So kind of my takeaway is, I'm not, I'm, my crystal ball is not so good as to say that we're never gonna have any issues, but I think we don't need, we don't need to solve this problem now. We've largely solved it for now, but let's be aware that it was put on the agenda, and if somebody wanted to bring it back on the agenda, they can. If you have any specific concerns you wanna talk about, talk to staff about, and have staff share with the council, we can do that. If we need to put it back on another study session agenda, we can do that. I think my takeaway was that it, it's not necessary tonight.
So.
And I'm not saying I'm right, I'm saying that's one person's opinion.
So I will just say, and, and I don't wanna put you on the spot, but I'm gonna put you on the spot, because Mike is the one that has to hear me all the time tell him things that I wanna see happen.
Right.
And so like, if he feels like it's too much, you know, with individual council members at different times saying, you know, like I've been talking about C-Tool and what, what, what can happen around that. So like, would you prefer that, or, 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 I mean, yeah, what's your preference?
Go ahead, Mike, you have a voice.
Well, first off, I just wanna say, you do have an agenda, addenda, I should've mentioned it at the very onset of the meeting, so there is, I do make sure it's reflected in the record that there is an addenda. So item, related to this item 3B, there were two comments made after the packet went out, so you'll see those in your addenda that's on your iPad through iLegislate. In terms of answering the question, again, I go back to you, I think it's been pretty well articulated here by a few council members and the mayor about how we got here. And so I think rewinding the clock, there were, I think, to the point, there was a little more consternation amongst, I think, everyone a year ago. I say everyone, staff, whether it was working with some of the groups that we work with. None of this was aimed at one particular group, because there are a variety of groups that we work with. And so with the group, as I say, with the groups we work with, with council, with staff, with the groups, there was consternation. And because I think when you look at the last five years, whether it's post-pandemic, the world has changed in a lot of different ways. This was one of them, just in terms of groups coming to the city for whatever reason that they were coming to the city. Change, it's all, it changed and evolved, and I think it put a lot of us, kind of caught probably a lot of us off guard of how to respond and how to react, and how do we best work with everyone, considering there's a lot of different requests coming our way. And so when this came up a year ago, we, we, I think it got brought up, and I had a slide prepared tonight, and we don't have to, I don't think we need to go through it tonight, but just to show that history, because it was about a year ago when there wasn't more of that consternation, as I would call it, that when I talked with Councilmember Schaff, he brought it to the December 2020, if my years are right, December 23 study session, where we framed up then the work plan for 2024. And so it got, it was part of that construction of, starting in that December 23, December of 2023 study session, it came back to the council then in, in the January study session, where we had our two new council members that were part of then framing up the priorities that were gonna take place this year. And so that was all decided in that January study session. The council approved it in January, I think it was the January 23rd or so meeting for the study session, for, for this entire year. So here we are now, it's nine months later, and I think as to the points that have been made, a lot of positive movement has, has happened. There's a, I can't remember the author now, where when it comes to new groups, and perhaps some of you have heard this before, where you go through kind of, sometimes there's the storming, and then there's performing and norming, so there's probably some of that storming that was kind of happening as everyone got a foothold of, of how we all interface better together. And so I think we're in a much better place today. Again, this was put on the agenda nine months ago, and so here we are today. And so I guess the question is, do we, do you wanna proceed with the conversation or not? I can tell you, and I've shared with a few council members, that this was a hard staff report to write, because, I mean, just we had different interest groups, and I think there was, how it was written was meant to be very, just kind of upfront and honest and no, aiming at one particular group, but I think everyone, there might've been some different takeaways, whether you're a council or perhaps staff, or perhaps an interest group when you read through the staff report. The idea was to have a conversation on just some of the challenges that there have been, and, you know, how do we work through those? Just to make sure that we limit frustrations moving forward, because I think everyone would agree there, there's plenty of frustrations perhaps over a year ago, and those have worked out, and we just wanna try to avoid that for everyone's benefit. And so that was really kind of the idea behind it, and certainly that's what we're prepared to talk through tonight, but if, if we're feeling okay about it, let's, let's see where we are in the next few months, and if we wanna decide to bring it back in 2025, we can.
Rebecca?
I'll just make one, you know, it's interesting to hear Kimberly, because everybody that I've heard from or, you know, in the conversations with, with Brad and Mike and res, you know, folks, I think everybody has read this report, I mean, and said, oh my God, this is targeted at me, I did this. And so I think that's part of why, and that came up more hearing Kimberly kind of say, oh God, this is because of the, what I've been asking Mike for. And so I think that goes to the point of maybe, you know, we're personalizing it, and, and I know, you know, I know some groups are feeling that way too, and, and I'll assure them it's, you know, there's, there's been a lot that's gone on. And so I, that's, it feels a little sensitive to me, and that's part of the reason that I think maybe, you know, having either, you know, one-on-one conversations with Mike about how we could better interact directly as individuals, I'm just not sure that trying to generalize some of it is the most productive way to be efficient.
Well, and I'll, I'll just add to Rebecca's comments. I mean, so I read the staff report, and, and it made me somewhat uncomfortable for this very reason, because, you know, we appreciate, I mean, understanding roles is important. You know, I know mayors who get elected, we have a council manager in form of government. As the mayor, I get one vote just like everyone else, all the other council members. But I, I know mayors, new mayors in some cities that have council manager forms of government, and the, and the city manager is the CEO of the city, basically. Well, they wanna be strong mayors, they wanna be Jacob Frye, and they wanna run the city. And there's, I think there's a lot of mayors who wanna run the city, if you will. That's not my job, my job, I've got one vote, and my, my job is to provide some leadership, but I don't run the city. The, the city manager runs the city. But I think the challenge is that when we get passionate about issues, we kind of like to stretch our roles. You know, as a council member, we are policymakers, but guess what? Sometimes we kind of wanna, we kind of wanna get behind the, the steering wheel of the Stamboni and, and drive the Sam, Zamboni, or whatever it is. And, and I think it's important for us to understand our roles, but also understand that we have the same goals, we wanna improve the city, and we wanna work collaboratively. So I got uncomfortable, I talked to Rebecca, and she's, and, and I'm thinking, you know what? That doesn't mean this issue isn't relevant or important. But I also think that we're probably, you know, we might be picking at some scabs here tonight too, and I don't wanna do that. I'd rather provide feedback, and if we need to bring this thing back again, we will. But I also think we're in a much better place, and, and if we were in the place that we are now when we were putting our council agendas together for the year, or for the study session, I don't think this would've made the list. But we were, we were going through some kind of challenging times then, and, and we thought it was a good idea. I think, I think I'd rather, I like this idea of sharing our concerns with Mike if there's anything that comes up, and we, we always wanna work to improve. We always do. Pat, do you have something? You don't have to, I just thought you were looking like you wanted to say something.
Well, one thing I did wanna know about, back to the staff report, and there were some concerns in the addenda about like naming organizations as, as advocacy groups and that kind of thing, and that, will that be sort of done and laid to rest? And so like, that's not what we're gonna say they are. I mean, do you know what I'm talking about? Like, there were some issues about that, like we're not an advocacy group, we're not this, and I just wanna be clear that that's not gonna come up again. Or, but do you know what I mean? Like, are we, like, that's not gonna be the, the permanent label, like that label, or what? You know what I mean?
Well, not really. I mean, because I don't think we per se label things. I mean, the, the challenge is, okay, you have a group that's, that is advocating for an issue in the city. I mean, okay, what are they? I mean, are, you know, I mean, I frankly, I, I haven't really thought about definitions. I mean, there were some things identified, but I think part of the challenge is there's not a real definite, there, I don't think there is a definition of any of those types of things.
Okay.
You know, sometime, you know, so I think there's some formal groups, I think there's informal groups, and, and all different types of individuals and groups care about what the city council is doing, and they wanna influence us in a certain way. I'm not sure how to label them. I might in one conversation say, well, such and such is, is, is an advocacy group, and another, another time I say, well, they're a volunteer group, or they're another, I don't, I don't have terminology down that I, that I would use.
That's right. There isn't really, there's no formal term of terminology.
There is none.
And that's what I wanted to be clear, is there a formal term, you know what I mean? Like, there's not.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
I mean, I haven't read my civics book lately. There, there may be somewhere there is, but I, not that I, that not, I don't think there's a, a glossary in the city for what, what different groups, what represents different groups.
I'll just say that, you know, Mike and I, this, this was kind of the crux of our conversation, and the thing is having, having joined the council at a time when many, many controversial issues just started happening because we're finally, you know, fully developed, and, you know, I, I think that we have learned a lot of things as staff and council in terms of dealing with it, and I expressed some of the things that, that, you know, I've been thinking about concerning, not even just like, you know, not labeling groups, but just like when issues come up and people are passionate about issues, how do, how do we help people communicate with each other on each side? And I, and so Mike knows how I feel, he is the CEO, I am just a member of the board, and I have expressed, you know, some of those things, and I think those are the kinds of things that we will continue to talk about as individual. Mike knows, you know, I have some thoughts about things to just keep on massaging those positive outcomes and, which is what we all want, and I think we are starting to get. And so I'll just leave it at that, you know, if, if that's where we're at, I'm really, I'm really okay with that, because Mike and I talk about some of these things periodically anyway.
Paula?
I'm gonna kind of be, take Kimberly's role as the problem child tonight, because I think in all the time that we've spent talking about whether we're gonna talk about this, we could've just said, stated our opinions, and I actually thought deeply and a lot about this over the last few days. And, you know, I actually wrote something down, kind of journaled it, and I'm just gonna say it, because it's gonna take two minutes.
Go for it.
And I'm gonna put my position out there, because I think, I don't, I'm not gonna play this Minnesota passive-aggressive game. I'm just gonna go out and say it. So I think regarding the two questions, if you wanna put them up or not, that's fine. I said, I think it would be, probably be helpful, and I told Mike this, this morning, helpful to have clear information on procedures and guidelines and parameters for groups interacting, groups and staff interacting with each other. But I do feel it's up to council members to set their own parameters and guidelines and how they interact with volunteer groups in that regard. I also agree that council's statutory role is big picture. Ordinances, resolution, budgets, EIP, CIP, et cetera. However, I feel that the line can also be fuzzy between policies and operationalizing them. Plus, just as staff advocates for major policies and ordinances that it feels are in the best interests of the community, council should also be able to occasionally weigh in on more minor issues that we nonetheless feel are important. While we cannot and should not direct staff, we can, and in my opinion, should be able to question and advocate about them via Mike privately, and even to use our bully pulpit to respectfully do so publicly, and even if that runs counter to staff opinion and practice. That is simply representative democracy and part of the deal. We all do not have to publicly agree on everything. It does not mean, for me, I'm gonna say this personally, that I do not respect or like staff or my other fellow council members. This is just a part of the process that has inherent tensions built into it. And I think we all need to put our big boy and big girl pants on, and that includes the community organizations, as well as council members and staff, and be willing to listen respectfully to each other, act within guidelines, and, you know, kind of put the best interest and realize we're not all gonna get whatever we want all the time. So I've said my piece.
Thank you.
There it is.
Is there anyone else?
And I like you all. I may not agree with you all, and I'll tell you when I don't. And I may get up and use the bully pulpit if I don't, like I did at the last joint park and board meeting when I still feel that sign should've been put up in Purgatory Park clarifying the current ordinance. That doesn't mean if, you know, staff comes to me and says, this is why, and I can pass that on, I will, but if I feel like, sorry, that reason doesn't make sense to me, I'm gonna pass that on as well.
Very good. Anyone else? Kizzy?
I was gonna say, you know, me coming from an organizer background.
I was going to say, you know, me coming from an organizer background, I really feel like we should be able to have groups organize in our community the way they've been doing. I don't feel uncomfortable, not just me as a person. I don't get uncomfortable when groups organize or even come to the council. I did talk to Mike about, yeah, we have to be prepared for it. But to put in too many policies and procedures, to me, that start to take away freedom and it makes you go through a lot of red tape, you know. And I just don't feel comfortable saying to add more red tape. I think, yes, there was tension. Yes, people got uncomfortable. But I'm, like I, you know, as a black woman, I'm uncomfortable all the time. And I think we have to get uncomfortable. And I think that's residents, people are going to make us feel uncomfortable. And I think that is okay. We, like Paula said, best, you know, we just got to, I call it, put on our soldier boots and just be, but.
I think she said, big girls and big boy pants.
I know, but I changed it a little bit.
All right, well, that's all right.
I wore my soldier boots.
I didn't think my hearing was going bad, but I wanted to double check.
It was right. It was right. But I just changed it a little bit. But no, I truly believe that I'm okay with how things are being ran right now. Like, yes, did we get uncomfortable at times or people got uncomfortable. But I'm okay with how things are right now. Like, you know.
Yeah, and I guess I would, I would add, you know, part of our jobs is to be uncomfortable. If we want to be comfortable, then we shouldn't be doing this. So, you know, I think, I think that's part of it. But, but I think the other point is, and you just said it, is that, yeah, we were, we went through some tough spots, but I think we're in a pretty good spot now. Let's not, let's not beat that horse, but let's not also, there's going to be times where we're in uncomfortable spots again. Let's not be afraid to raise this issue again. And in the meantime, can, you know, communicate with Mike and he'll communicate with staff. And, and, yeah, I totally agree. We don't always agree all the time, but I think we have to be willing to get uncomfortable to do our jobs well. So anything else? Mike, I don't know if you want to say anything or if we want to move on. And let's see, excuse me. Kimberly?
Yes, just real quick. So I'm fine with like letting this go and not making any changes. My, and I was contacted by someone who was concerned that it could turn into sort of a gatekeeping situations where groups weren't, weren't, weren't heard and weren't able to, you know, effect change in the city. So my concern is what, the follow-up for when we have advocacy groups come before the council with whatever they're coming before the council with, that's not something that, for that's a policy thing for council to act directly on. Like, what happens after the meet, you know, what happens with that group as far as interactions with that group? And that's not something we have to figure out right now. And that's like part of the why bug Mike on things. But it's just something to keep in mind that, like, how do we make sure that groups are being heard? And that if, if they need a response from council, how do we make that happen? If it's not policy related or a policy, you know, statutory.
It's, I mean, you know, I mean, my attempt at an answer is, I think that we are, I mean, our job is to talk to our residents, whether it's an individual or a group. You know, my, my, the phone number that is on the, on the city website is my cellphone. I take calls anytime and, you know, I want to be, I want to be open and reachable. And I don't think I'm any different than any of my other council members. And, you know, I mean, you know, typically when you talk to groups, no, you really talk to individuals. And when you talk to council members, you're talking to individuals. And I think that if an issue for a group is important, they're going to contact all of us and share their opinions. And I want to encourage that. I mean, this is about dialogue. This is about, about being accessible and it's about listening. And, and so I, I think that's the best way for groups to, to move something forward that they're advocating for, is to give us each a call and tell us what we think. I will even, I will further advise groups that are individuals who write to us, it is much more powerful to receive an individual email than it is to receive an email that's addressed to all the council members. Because when I get an email that's addressed to all the council members, I think, well, I should let the ward council member handle that. It's not, it's not important for me to do it. If I get something that says, dear mayor Weersum, and it's exactly the same that you've written everyone else, then it's an individual email and that has much more impact. The emails that, in my view, and that's one person's opinion, emails that get written to the whole council have much less impact than the same email written to me as an individual. Doesn't take that much more work to cut and paste it, but you'll have much greater impact.
So since we're as far down the road as we are, I will say that the, my, this is, this is the one thing that I mentioned to Mike. Over the years, there have been a variety of issues that have come before the city. And there have been groups of people that took a particular position on an issue. Sometimes it was literally something that they wanted to see. It might be something that's on the ballot or just a change to something that we're doing. And they organized and they advocated and they came for the city. And the one thing that, that I think eventually we may want to talk about, or, you know, I will just keep talking to Mike, is at what point, when you have a strong group of people that have, that are aligned in their viewpoint on a particular issue, how do we inform people on the other side? You know, at what point does the rubber meet the road where we're saying, okay, this is an issue. You know, this is something that is not going to go away. And they're going to want some kind of action or response from the city. And so the one thing that I was thinking is, at what point and in what manner do we bring it forward to people who, who may perceive it as a solution in search of a problem? Like, we have people that, you know, are passionate about something and they, they want something to happen. And the rest of the people in the city, it's just like, didn't bother them, so they weren't paying attention. But then when it comes forward, then it's a problem. And so it's, it's, you know, just thinking as, as, as the quote-unquote legislators and staff, you know, what point do we realize that, okay, you know, we've sort of reached critical mass. This isn't going to go away. How do we communicate out what, what has been communicated to us? How do we begin the discussion? If it's something that's going to change the way we do something in the city? And that was really the crux. And then just making sure that we boil down information to, to the people that are coming to us with concerns. And I, I'll just use a very simple example. At the very first, like, open meeting about when, when we decided to look for a place for the mountain, for the mountain bike trail, there was some assumption that people knew what a mountain bike was. And at some point I said to staff, you know, you might want to just tell people in the room what a mountain bike is because I'm not sure that everyone knows. And so they did. And then somebody at my table stood up and said, oh, it's not a motorcycle? Oh, I don't need to be here and just went home. So, you know, just, just, you know, just sort of keeping things simple, making sure that people have the basics on really important things. Because sometimes it just takes something that's simple and just sort of getting on people's level. So those are the things that I was thinking about. It wasn't so much about, you know, putting sideboards on anything, but really sort of how do we open that up and really have that dialogue? So I'll just leave it at that.
Does anyone else have anything to say on this topic we're not talking about tonight? All right, I will, we've got more agenda to go to, so thank you all.
Brad, I'll just add, not to belabor the conversation, my apologies, but I do want to make a couple of things clear, at least for those that might be watching or listening, that, again, this conversation was not staff-driven. I mean, this was something that came up through the council's conversation during the study session and work planning. And so that was the hard part. I think I go back to writing a staff report because there were just different perspectives. And so we, as staff, also want to be honest and upfront with the council on some of the challenges that we see from a staff level. Because part of having a productive conversation is knowing the issues that there are. And so I think the other thing just worth noting is that what's keyed up all of our success is trusted relationships and trusting working together, and we have that. Yet, I think, going back to what Kimberly and I think Deb just alluded to, I do think there are, even though things are in a good place today, I do think there are times when things are going to percolate up again. Whether it's with some of the groups that we work with today or a group that's, we haven't heard from yet. And so I do think that's where some of the challenge lies in. And that's, that was really kind of the intent behind the way that the staff report was written, was to kind of shape out and really kind of flesh out what some of those challenges are. It's not, it's discouraging to hear some of the, I think people read it and had some really negative takeaways that, I think Kimberly said, someone contacted you and said, there's some gateway blocking. It has nothing to do with any type of red tape, other than knowing that when, when residents reach out to whether it's council, whether it's, I think alluded to, an individual email you might get from someone. An email that staff might get from someone. An email that goes to a mayor and a council member and a staff member. An email that goes to a staff, staff and a council member. I mean, there's, there's all different ways that people communicate, whether it's email, a phone call, coming to a meeting. So I think it is understanding that when we get all those different communications and different requests, how do you as a council respond to those? Whether it's a group email that comes to you, whether it's a one-on-one email, whether it's an email that includes a staff member. So how do we all communicate and what is the flow of communication? And that, and what do we, and not only just the flow of communication, what can we commit to doing? Understanding that there are different roles and responsibilities. And so that was, that was the purpose of the conversation, was to really not create a harder working environment, to really talk about what are some of the real challenges? And then how do we prepare for those in a way that you can respond to a resident or a group? And staff can too, so we're on the same page. Because I felt at times it's been hard to be on the same page because you get emailed. Meanwhile, someone's getting blind copied on something. A council member's going to respond and then send it to me and I see it. And so there's just, there's, I think in this today's world of communication, that's where some of the challenges have been. It's just who, who are the voices we're talking to? And how can we as a city help residents or groups, when they do reach out, navigate it in a way so they know that their voices are being heard? Because that's ultimately the goal here is, is to hear from groups. How do we as a city then kind of funnel them through a process? So everyone knows they're being heard, they're not being dismissed, their concerns are being taken seriously. And yet at the same time, knowing that it's also, there's some, there's some hardness in all this because it's, we can't also say yes to everything. We don't want to say no to everything. And so how do we then kind of flush all that out? That was really the basis of tonight's conversation.
Thanks, Mike. I hesitate to say this, but anything else? All right. So assuming there's nothing else on that matter, we're going to go to the strategic plan update on a very important topic, a key part of our strategic plan, community inclusiveness. And I will turn that to Mike or Jace or.
Yeah, thank you, Brad. I'll just kick it off. We're going to do a quick couple of handoffs here. So I'll kick it off for 10 seconds or so, then hand it over to Miranda. And then I think she'll do a quick handoff to Jace. We are in our fifth now study session where we're talking about one of our strategic plan priorities. Tonight is community inclusiveness. And with our, Jace leads our, that pillar, as often we call it. So we'll turn this over to Jace here in a few seconds. But again, just to give you a sense of where we're at, next month in October, we have our last pillar coming forward, that is natural resources and environment. So that's coming forward next month. And so between Will and Masietka, they will be here on that one. And so we're getting closer. There's a lot of building in this, as you know, we started back in April. And, yeah.
I'm going to have you finish up and then I'm going to say, we're going to take a five-minute break. Because I've been, I've gotten some, I've gotten a few body language indications that we probably could use. So we'll wrap up and then, and then we'll take a break for five minutes.
Sounds good. Thank you, Brad.
Sorry about that.
Nope, nope, that's all right. And so really just want to turn it over to Miranda, who has been the lead on this pillar for the last, or this iteration of the strategic profile. Also want to recognize, oh, Sarissa is very instrumental in this. Sarissa is really, she keeps all of us in line when it comes to our strategic profile and we appreciate all of her efforts. Reason I say this, and you'll hear me say this a couple more times for the year, is up. So next month is our sixth pillar. And then in December, between then and October's study session and December, staff will be spending a couple of days working on action steps, refine and continue to refine the metrics that you've seen here tonight and in the previous study sessions. And then when this comes to you in December as a whole package, we'll have that presentation at that time. And I'll get into all the reasons why this is all important, which I know you already know.
Great. Okay, before Miranda goes, I hate to be rude, let's take a five-minute break. We'll come back quickly and, and move on. I'm looking forward to this.
It's a big trip to not get along.
That's right. That's what I keep saying to myself. That's what's kind of.
Are you ready? We're good?
I'll catch up with that.
And some nice weather, a little bit nicer than a Minnetonka December. I don't know.
All right, everyone, we will, we will get started. And so I know we are on the strategic plan update, community inclusiveness. Mike, thank you for your introduction. And I believe you were going to Miranda next.
Yeah, thank you, Mary and Council. I wanted to mention that during the council retreat, Kelly and I and Patsy worked on this together. The iteration you're going to see tonight is much different than the three of us worked on that day. We, of course, didn't have Jace with us and we were able to sit down together and ruminate a little bit more on it. So this iteration is much different than what we talked about that day. And I think it's in a much better place. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jason and Sarissa.
All right. Hi, Council. It's good to see you all again. So, let's see. Okay, here's a rep. I'm going to run you through all of them. And then, and then I'll take questions after I run, run you through each of them, if that's cool with you. So for community inclusiveness, what we have right now is build an engaged, accepting and compassionate community that embraces diversity and uses varied perspectives to create an inclusive and equitable city for, for everyone. And I know at the retreat, there was talk about, I think, like a connected welcoming community. And so as we think about when and where we can state what it is exactly we're trying to get to in spaces that allow it, I think it's usually best to do so. And so that's, that's why you see that language there. And then so for the first one, the outcome we're going for is hoping that all people feel welcome and engaged. And then when we look at the performance metrics for that, what we talked about was trying to track the number of opportunities and spaces to foster belonging, number of surveys provided to community members, number of sensory-friendly options at events, and trying to incorporate American Sign Language at some of the events that we're hosting. Again, a lot of what we're doing is creating a baseline because either we haven't done some of these things before or we've done them but kind of in different iterations. And so a lot of that you'll see is like, I'm just trying to get a better sense of, you know, for the events that we're doing and we're throwing, who's showing up, who's not showing up, why. And so that's where you see like some of that survey and that's what I'm trying to figure out with that. And then the target is to increase the opportunities and spaces provided. Try to put a number on how many surveys at events I'm doing per year. And then again, how many times are we offering sensory-friendly options at city-run events? For the next one, we have enhanced community representation through art and imagery. And I'm sure you've seen already walking through here, there's been a lot of, there's been a lot of art updates. Which, who doesn't love art? It's all great. So the performance metrics there, looking at public art and cultural events that represent diverse cultures. So that could be anything from music and dance to painting to clay, whatever you could think of. And we'll be looking at the percentage of commissioned artists from underrepresented groups, making sure that we're getting a good variety of, of artists as we do things together. And then community representation through, through social media. I know I've talked with the communication team about trying to reach the younger demographics and like, what might that look like? And who might we call on to do things like that as we're trying to reach the younger folks in our city? And then, so the target for that would be to increase community representation across public art, cultural events, commissioned artists and social media. And then finally, we've got create equitable opportunities for accessing programs and services by identifying demographics and removing barriers. So again, as I'm talking about trying to create that baseline, who's in our city? Where are they? And trying to use an equity lens as we're getting communication out to these different pockets of people. Because one-size-fits-all doesn't always work. So how can I target this group specifically? What do they need versus this group in this pocket of the city? With that, and again, using our GIS, trying to identify underrepresented groups and then demographic participation. and then demographic participation in programming and services, again, who's showing up? You know, who has memberships at the Marsh at Williston? Who's in our programming? Who goes to Safety Day with PD? All those fun things. And then that would also include our ACE program participants. And so the target there, again, is going to be to increase our demographic percentage. We're going to try to fully staff our ACE program each year, and then increase diversity in the applicant pool for that. So this year, we had more interns for eight. Last year, I think we had one ACE intern, and this year we had six? Five, we had five. So we're going in the right direction. So thinking about, you know, as we have funds available, if we're not filling positions, if we can't fill all of Public Works, you know, depending on who the lead is for each program, like I could take another DEI person if there's an interest and we already had an open slot. So thinking about how can we get the most folks through the door, is what we'll look at for that target. Okay, so I'm open, any questions that you have? And if it's more helpful for me to leave this up, I definitely can.
No, leave up the questions for right now, but then we can, I mean, well, I don't know. Do people have the chart, or would you like?
The chart is more helpful, because otherwise I don't know what I'm affirming.
Okay, okay, well then, then go to the chart, I stand corrected. I can pull up the question, so I've got them on my iPad, so please do it that way.
That sounds good. So first one, does the city council affirm the description for community inclusiveness?
So Council, your thoughts on that question?
I think it's, I'll just say, it's a little bit wordy, but you sold me on your description of why you kind of expanded it. And I'm comfortable with that, that makes sense.
Yeah, other comments? You know, Jace, as you were presenting this, the thing that I appreciated is that you have expanded my thought, I won't speak for anyone else, my thought on what inclusiveness represents. And I think that's really important. We want, you know, our actions tell people where our values are. And things like having accessible restrooms, and using American Sign Language, demonstrating that people who we may not see every day need to be part of our inclusiveness. And as a parent of disabled children, I mean, I've been exposed to a world that a lot of people don't know exists. And I think your definition of inclusiveness really does a nice job of that. And so I want to commend you on that, I'm supportive as well.
Thanks, Mike.
I would say that for me, I'm, you know, I was a musician, not a visual artist, but the arts are just super important to me. And first of all, I just think that a society without beauty is a sick society. So it's just been really fun to come into the community center now and see beautiful art and see people represented that have not been represented. So that's something that I noticed before we even were going over this plan. And so that's something that I, you know, personally really, really appreciate. And I mean, just so many things that I see on the posters as I'm leaving the community center about the kinds of things that we're doing to show that we're already doing this. So I definitely, I also think that the strategic, there might be a way to word craft and get the same, we might be able to knock that, the strategic priority description down by a couple of words and make it a little bit. But I think it's an important priority, and it does capture everything we need to capture. So I think that's one thing, I think the outcomes are the outcomes that we need. I do agree that they are. And what was the third question?
Performance metrics and targets.
The metrics. Yeah, I mean, I think, I think I think the way you described about how we're going to determine those things, I think it's appropriate.
Thanks, have other thoughts, Kizzi?
I just wanted to know, what is the ACE program?
Yeah, so the ACE program is the program we run in partnership with the City of Hopkins. And so for those interns, there has to be some kind of barrier to access, right? Whether you're maybe a young person of color, there's a socioeconomic barrier, there's a language barrier, maybe you're first generation, whatever the case may be, there's a large swath. But, so we're specifically trying to target folks that have some kind of barrier to access to different programming. And so then we have in the city, so like I had a DEI intern this year through the ACE program, and then I had my own DEI interns that were like college-level folks. So there, it can be a wide range. I think the youngest that we had was sixteen, seventeen, all the way up. But then we have people in Public Works, we have people in Community Development, we have people in Admin. So all across the city, we're trying to fill these slots to gauge the interest of the kids that apply, or the youth.
Is this for advanced students, this ACE program?
When you say advanced, what do you mean?
Like kids that score higher, you say college-level students?
No.
Can they have an IEP in the LGO for this program?
An IEP would count as a barrier.
Okay. Okay, because I was under assumption that this program was for advanced students. And so long as it's not that, then I'm totally okay with the program.
Yeah.
Good.
This is maybe...
Patsy?
So, so are you surveying community members at the events, or about each event? Or like, do you know what I mean? It says, survey community members' events each year.
Survey, which one are you on there?
This is on the...
Target?
The first.
Target, yeah, sorry.
Survey community members at blank events each year. So how many events can I actually, like, have a survey out for folks that are there? And asking them questions like, hey, like, why are you here today? What made it so you could come today? And then I'm also taking note of who isn't here, right? And just, again, trying to create a baseline, so that I have some data to actually base my action steps and my targets off of. Because right now, I'm kind of just, you know, I'm here, I'm there, I'm looking at stuff, but I would like to have some more concrete data for me to make some true action steps in trying to continue to diversify and continue to create inclusive spaces. So, but I need that baseline first.
That's awesome.
Other questions?
I just have a...
Kimberly?
Just looking, I can, and I know it's not our job to wordsmith, but if you want to condense it a little bit, you could say, "community that embraces diversity and varied perspectives", and get rid of the "and uses".
Takes word, "uses" is out.
Any other?
Other comments? Yeah, I, I'll just add, I think, yeah, I like it. And to your point, I appreciate how you're trying to quantify things. But quantifying things with no baseline is not much information. So you're trying to get the baseline established, you're trying to quantify it, and then we can measure performance. And I think that's exactly the right thing to do. Anything else, Paula?
Yeah, just appreciate following up the expansive, you know, the expanding our vision of what inclusiveness means and what diversity means. To, you know, include people that we don't necessarily always see out and about in the community. Whether that's, you know, people who are other-able, and things like that. So I think that's an important thing for us to be embracing. So thank you for that.
Absolutely.
And I will say that the pictures in the hallway of the different, representing different people in our community, different typical people in our community, I think that's really a nice touch. And when the, when that art was going up, and the artist was here, I happened to be around, and I chatted with her. She did point out council members that she does portrait, she does portraits, if you're interested. I told her that the mayor doesn't need one, but I might have council members who may. So anyway, but she was, I just think that that has really added a lot, and it makes a real statement about our inclusiveness, so I really appreciate it. Mike?
I would just say, giving compliments to Jace and Miranda, Sarissa, for really working on this. I'm just going to say this, what excites me about this one, then, that we haven't seen before in our current strategic profile, is that second one. Enhancing community representation through art and imagery. And I think for those that were at the League of Minnesota Cities Conference, we heard that from a number of speakers, that just how art can influence culture in your community. And I think a couple of council members have brought up examples of where art can show up in our community. And so I think this is a real focus on perhaps art in our community, more so than just in our facilities, but public art. We have some murals, I think Julie pointed out some murals that we had on our tour here recently. So how do we expand that in our community and use that to our, towards beating this goal? So I think it's a real shift, and just like what our approach will be when it comes to community inclusiveness.
Being on the Places Committee, I'm just going to throw that in there, that we're going to be making decisions on public art around the light rail.
And, you know, I've, there's, I mean, you know, I get emails from people who want to sell murals to the city. But, and, you know, we probably all get some of that stuff. But, you know, as I walk down the hallway, and we have the history of Minnetonka depicted on those panels along, and I've read those, I've seen people do that. But the thought of if there are places where we could put murals that tell the history of our community, you know, what a powerful thing. And then, you know, the people we put in those, you know, to demonstrate our commitment to a diverse population, a historical population, but the fact that we value everyone. We show people who may have a disability and look at that as a strength, not a weakness. And that's part of who we are, I think. I think those are powerful images. Anything else? All right, well, thank you, Jace. Thank you, Sarissa. Thank you, Miranda. Thank you, Mike. So if I can find my agenda again. So, yeah, October study session topics, and we have a sheet on that. And Mike, you want to put that up? We don't have too many more, we're getting down to our last three blocks, so go, take it.
Yeah, hard to imagine we're going to be entering our fourth quarter of 2024. And so the items that are scheduled for October 14th are noted there. The first bullet point, city manager review process. If you have questions on that, Miranda's can speak on that. That is something I'm not involved in, but I think this really, if I'm understanding correctly, stems from last December, I think, when I had my last performance review. There's some comments, I think, made by Council on how that could be streamlined or improved. So I think that's what Miranda's planning to do, is bring back some thoughts on that in October. The other item there is identify policy matters for boards and commissions. I think one of the themes that we've heard from Council was that are there other agenda topics? Are there items, policy matters, that could be pushed, I mean, for lack of a better word, pushed to some of our boards and commissions for input, recommendations, and just better utilizing some of our boards and commissioners? Trying to lighten some of the policy matters that you maybe deal with on the front end, having that go through a board or commission. So we'll tease out an agenda item for you to come prepared for that October 14th meeting. So if you've got things that you think might fall appropriately with a park board, or whether it's Sustainability Commission, maybe it's the EDAC, whatever it might be, that's what we'll talk about in October for that agenda item. Recently, we just added the Worker Protection Law, so that, I think, stemmed out of some recent conversations that we've had. And then, as I noted here a few minutes ago, their strategic plan update. So we'll have our sustainability and natural environment. Again, Will and Leslie will be here for that one, of course, with Sarissa as well. And then we did build in, in this last quarter, and again, it's kind of back-to-back months, but building in a 30-minute open time. So a lot to cover in October, perhaps that 30-minute open time can be shifted to November. So we'll try to still manage that October study session, so we can be wrapped up by 8:30, so we get to that 30-minute open time. Then November's usually dedicated to budgets, so staff will be bringing forward the Enterprise Fund budgets. Julie Wishnak committed that this year we'll be talking about our rental registry update. I know that was our first phase this last year, so staff will be providing an update on the rental registry in November. And then in December, a lot to cover. As again noted earlier, our strategic profile action steps will be coming forward. So kind of a big package with our strategic profile. We'll start preparing for then the 2025 study session work plan. And so I'll start, when we have our upcoming one-on-one meetings, Council, we'll start getting that, as I call one of the lists I maintain, a list for what 2025 will look like. So you can start framing up those priorities. We'll also in December want to talk about legislative priorities. So we'll be coming off an election this year, so we'll take a look at who perhaps some of our new legislators will be, and then start framing up our city legislative priorities. And we usually have that meeting with our legislators every January. And then last, we will also have then 2025 council and staff appointments. So as you're coming off the heels of your policy adoption committees, either with Met Council or with the League of Minnesota Cities, and other appointments that you serve on, we'll start having that conversation on where everyone will start serving in 2025. So a lot of housekeeping in December. So that's what we're teeing up for the next three months. Council, again, these are your study sessions, so if there's a reshuffling of priorities or reshuffling of any of this, we're here to implement those for you.
Great, thanks, Mike. So Council, I mean, we're almost to the 30 minutes of open time. But any questions or comments quick for Mike on the study session work plan? All right, I'm not seeing any, the only thing I would say is, let's be mindful of our December 9th study session work plan, and really put some good thought into things that we'd like to see coming forward in our study sessions for next year. You know, this is really kind of the first year we've done things in such an orchestrated and organized fashion, for lack of better terminology. And I think that, you know, I think that, you know, let's really be intentional to help Mike put together and help the team put together valuable time in our study sessions. Let's not fill it up for the sake of filling it up, but let's have some good substantive things there and think about that upfront. So that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mike, I don't know, I'll let you kick off the 30 minutes of open time, with any comments, and then it's open time. So Council, go at it.
Yeah, nothing much to say. I think, again, the staff report was pretty short, but again, this was built in for your time as issues have perhaps popped up throughout the year. This is, again, I'd say it's your time to bring up whatever matters of public policy that you want to discuss, questions for staff, or things that you want to talk about. Maybe it's a two-minute time, you could certainly...
We don't have to do 30 minutes, but it is, Kimberly, excuse me.
All right, it won't take 30 minutes, I promise.
Well, you can if you want, it's available.
So this has been brought up to me, and I'm sure other council members have been contacted, about problems with e-bikes on our trails, and
Absolutely.
In particular, youth on e-bikes. That one underage, so you're legally supposed to be 15 or older to be on an e-bike, so underage youth on the trails and not riding properly. And as I discussed with Mike, I have seen, not in Minnetonka, but I'm sure it's here too, and I, youth, young adults on the tiny little motorcycles for...
That's what they are.
There's no pedals, it's not a bike, I mean, it's not an e-bike.
It's an electric motorcycle.
It's an electric motorcycle, which aren't legal on the trails. But again, and, you know, like, I was riding my e-bike and going at a pretty good clip, and like whizzed by, they whizzed by me on these little tiny bikes. So I think, you know, it's, and I know the city has been having conversations with the schools and other things, but I don't know if we may get to the point where there needs to be some ordinance around e-bike, and then again, I don't know, you know, it's, what's the word I'm looking for? Enforcement.
Enforcement, yeah.
Enforcement is going to be a challenge, so I'm not sure what all we can do, but it's something that, you know, we're starting to hear about.
Yeah, absolutely, Rebecca. Rebecca?
Yeah, I agree. It's come up several times. And it came up, you know, this is such a tricky issue, but the thing that I'm seeing are these teenagers who are not old enough to drive, but you know, old enough to probably get really hurt or hurt somebody. You know, and there's, as I understand it, it did, so there's a first mile, last mile, like, kind of these things also help people get around, and so there's a tension there. But it's certainly a safety issue. But the biggest thing is, as I understand it, I've had a conversation with Representative Elkins about it, kind of in another context, but these are, the restrictions are statutory. And so this may be a topic for our legislative discussions. And Representative Elkins is very, he indicated that this came up at the 494 Quarter Commission meeting, but he is very interested in understanding what the issues are and kind of what, how they can help. And also, you know, Three Rivers is also very engaged on that topic, and it's something that's coming up, as I understand, at their meetings as well. So I think it's definitely a concern.
I'm one of the policy committees that I've joined the different, the advancing, evolving capabilities of e-bikes now. Where it used to be, you know, they were 15 miles an hour, now they can go up to 30. And so I think at the state level, at several committees are looking at that. And so, yeah, I think that would be a good thing to be involved with and advocate for at that level as well.
And, you know, I'm in violent agreement with everything that's been said, but I think it's, I think it's, I think we should take it further too, because it's clearly a problem on the trails, but it's also a problem on the roads. And so I happened to be talking to Commissioner Edelson from Hennepin County today on a couple of topics, and then I said, oh, by the way, as I sit here right now, and this was, I was here earlier, and then I went home, and then I talked to her, and then I came back, and I said, oh, two electric motorcycles being ridden by, you know, 12-year-old kids just zipped by my house at 30 miles an hour. And, you know, so it's multifaceted. I mean, clearly Three Rivers and, you know, on our LRT trails and so forth, really important. But, you know, the other thing that Kimberly just said, you know, everyone, in my view is, everyone likes rules and nobody likes enforcement. I mean, you know, nobody likes to have rules enforced on them, but it's a significant burden. And so I'm gonna draw an analogy that you may or may not agree with, but I look at this a little bit like the things that we're saying about dogs at Purgatory Park. While we don't have the all-encompassing solution on that right now, maybe we should get some signage up and lay out expectations. We can do that quickly. We don't have to wait for a long time. Talk to Three Rivers and get some signage up and let people know our expectations so that then perhaps, and maybe we need some ordinances too, but perhaps if we lay out expectations, then when we start enforcing, people won't be surprised. So I think there's clear, and I also think that we should talk to the League of Minnesota Cities and say, okay, a lot of cities are talking about this, what should we do? You know, this is not going to be an easy problem to solve, but I think if we start taking some action and laying out our expectations as a community, then maybe we can be a leader and help regionally as well. So I just think it's an important issue.
Yeah, and I just might add one thing. The saddest thing for me is hearing from parents who are now not letting their little kids ride, learn to ride their bikes on the trails because they've gotten, you know, kind of whizzed by or almost hit by, you know, people on e-bikes and often young people on e-bikes and these little scooters.
And we all know that in terms of doing our jobs, our spouses are very good coaches on that. And you know, my wife is big on getting outside and exercise and running and things like that. And she said, you know, not only are these kids whizzing by on these e-bikes, but they're not getting any exercise. They're outside, they're not, but a lot of them, and when I was talking to Commissioner Edelson, she says, yeah, and I've seen kids on these things go by on their phones at the same, they're riding them, no helmet. And you think about safety, you know, going 30 miles an hour on the trail, and somebody's trying to teach their kid how to ride their bike. I mean, it is, it's a significant public safety issue that I don't have the answer for, but I think we know that we should be concerned about it.
Yeah. And I will just add, and I brought this up with Mike, is also where we have two e-bike riders, so my husband was riding on a trail and, you know, following the rules, riding it, and had someone cuss him out and tell him that bikes weren't allowed on the trail, which, so, I mean, I think we need, we always need more education and like what trail etiquette is for pedestrians as well as bike riders. And I've seen, you know, well, we call them pathletes.
Right, yeah.
The, not e-bike riders, but that, you know, that are like training and going 20-plus miles an hour.
Right, yeah. Yeah, it's not, it's not just e-bikes.
Not just e-bikes, it's just that with the prevalence of e-bikes, and then again, with kids that can now go 20, 30 miles an hour.
Yeah.
Right, right.
So anyway, and I don't, you know, we're not gonna problem solve it here, but I think it's an issue. But I also think it's not just a Minnetoka issue, it's a broader issue. And think about ways that we can approach it kind of with a regional perspective, so that we're not, you know, we're not the only city that's got some rules, we're not the only city that's investing resources in enforcement, we're doing it consistently in a way that respects our neighboring communities, so I don't know.
And I would just say that, Kimberly brought this up to me today and mentioned, tonight's a good time to bring it up. It's not on our current radar screen, you know, it's not in our next three months discussion in the study session. Staff, I'll just give you an update on what staff is doing with it right now. First, in talking with Scott Boraboom, Minnetoka Police have been working with Minnetoka Schools, primarily with Middle School West. MME, is it called?
East, yeah.
They're the ones parking on the trail.
They're the ones that are, so what, because most middle schoolers are under the age of 15. And so the Minnetoka Schools was trying to crack down on it by telling parents and students, you can't even bring your bikes on school property. And so kids were not doing that. Instead, they were getting up to the school property, hopping off on the trail, so they take the trail, get to the school property, and then secure their bike to a chain-linked fence with, you know, a bike lock. And then they'd have this kind of row of bikes that was causing some concerns on the trail. And so our police departments worked with the Minnetoka School District on messaging with students. They've now resolved that. They put up some signage, and our police have talked to about 13 different families, just explaining the rules. And I think whoever said it here, to me, there's a lot of education that needs to happen, even before we get into ordinances. We're aware that Excelsior, I think, is in the midst of adopting e-bike ordinance. I heard, talking to a colleague friend of mine from Edina City Manager, mentioned they're thinking about an ordinance. And we all like now, and I say we, a few of us acknowledge, and you said it here, the trickiness in it is, state law already exists that you have to be 15. And so how do you catch someone that's 12, 11, proof of ID? What's the penalty? So I think that's a lot of...
Because you know, every 11-year-old has an ID on them.
There's that challenge of just like...
And, you know, how many parents are aware that that age limit is? So like, we have to communicate that.
So there's, I think there's a big educational campaign that probably needs to happen. We did put in our newsletter earlier this year, some information about e-bikes. It was in, I think, Sun Sailor here a few months ago as well, but just certainly, it was just one time, right? So probably some more education has to happen, working with the school districts, both districts, on educating kids on what state law is, communicating with parents on what some of the basic state law requirements are, and then looking at are there other local ordinances that we can do to help supplement what's our, again, state statute? And then there's a whole enforcement conversation.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, and on a legal question, I mean, you're gonna have kids at whatever age riding e-bikes, and if they're doing it appropriately and they're not going, you know, if they're doing it with a speed limit, all that sort of thing, or, you know, that's one thing. But could we pass an ordinance that says that if you are between ages of 12 and 16 and you're gonna ride e-bikes, you need to have, you need to have an ID? You need to have a state ID that shows, and I don't know if that's within our bailiwick or not, but you say, okay, well, that's fine. If you're gonna do that, you have to have ID so that you can prove who you are if you get stopped for breaching the rules. Or, you know, again, I'm getting way too executional, but are there things that, within the bailiwick of the city ordinances, that we can do that maybe don't interfere with state law or other laws, but enable us to better enforce the laws that are in place? Kind of rhetorical question.
Yeah, again, state law says you have to be 15.
Yeah, so if it's 15, then...
A 12-year-old can't ride by law.
But how do you demonstrate that you're 15, and if, you know?
That's what I'm saying, like, you know?
But can we require that?
15-year-olds, you know, I mean, some 15-year-olds have their learner's permit, and they're super excited to have it, so they might have it on them, but...
Yeah, but they don't, I don't know if they have their age and things like that on there, but who knows? Anyway, again, we're problem solving, but I think, I'd be curious as to how much latitude we have to maybe put in ordinances in place that will enable us to do a better job of monitoring behavior.
I think all, like us tonight, I think a lot of cities are having the same conversation right now. How do we address this? Because complaints are coming up everywhere, just in terms of its usage, and I think to Paul's point, that, you know, these technologies outpace regulatory.
Absolutely, and that's always the case.
It's always the case.
Yeah.
So I have a couple things that are not e-bike related. So I was, I was at a really nice gathering on Saturday night, and someone that lives not too far from me who participates in triathlons and stuff, just reminded me that they were unable to swim in Shady Oak Lake because of the E. coli. And as I understand it, that was like a goose feces-related issue. And so, you know, he was thinking about like places where they have like sheepdogs that, you know, like the same kind of dogs that they have at airports that just chase the...
Chase the geese.
Chase the geese away, like, but you know, he also just wanted to talk a little bit about, you know, what can we do about improving the water quality? And that just sort of brought up to me a couple of things about water quality here in general. And also, we had, you know, we had some really wet years where we had neighbors that were really concerned about, you know, outlets for water bodies, and so it became a non-issue because we had a couple of very dry years this year, not so much. I don't know what the coming forecast is, but, you know, if it's wet again, I'm just thinking that this is a topic that may come back around in terms of water levels in various neighborhoods. And I don't think, I think, I think we got to a pretty good place in general about how we were understanding, you know, what we're gonna do, but I just, I just anticipate that. And I do think that we do have to think about water quality. And, you know, I couldn't even remember the last time we couldn't swim in Shady Oak Lake, so.
It's always this time of year.
Yeah.
It's always, it usually tests well all year round. It's just happened to be at the same time this event was, so it was unfortunate, but we didn't want people getting sick, so that was, that was the end of that.
Very reasonable.
Yes. You don't need... But it doesn't test poorly all year. It's due in August timeframe where things get rough out there.
Yeah, and I'm not talking just about, about E. coli, but I just, you know, just the invasives and, you know, it's just, that's a topic, you know, maybe that's better for the Sustainability Commission or something, but sort of our approach to that. And the other thing is, and Mike explained that like the plastic bag recycling was just a temporary deal, and we had a Green Corps person spearheading that, and, you know, they're not with the city anymore, et cetera, et cetera. But I will say that plastic film garbage is soul, is crushing my soul when I go, you know, drive to work. It's just solid plastic film on the sides of our roads all the way to work, and it just gets worse and worse and worse and worse as you get closer to St. Paul. And so I just think that, you know, that may be, again, more appropriate for when we're talking about boards and commissions and something that Sustainability Commission, but I do think that we need to start grappling with that. Because even though, even though we have recycling, it's not all that convenient, and I think packaging has become more and more and more plastic. So like, I love Costco, but over the last few years, things that used to just have a strap around them or be a little bit glued together now are wrapped in plastic film, and it's almost everything. And so it, you know, just, you know, since we haven't been able to convince producers not to produce it, I think that as a municipality, I would love to grapple with that in some way.
I wonder if that's something to also consider for our legislative...
Yes.
Yeah.
Because I know there have been some bills introduced that would require the manufacturer to be responsible for...
Right.
Some part of the recycling, yes.
Recycling.
And we're doing that on the, we're doing that at the National League on EENR as well, just trying to make producers of toxins and garbage responsible.
Responsible, yeah.
I think that is one education point potentially that we can talk about, because there are services, you know, I subscribe to a service that you can recycle a lot of unrecyclable things, textiles and, you know, things like that. So we could at least be educating people that that's an opportunity. I know people don't like to spend money, but it's not that, it's not super expensive.
I just have one other thing in that, I'm sorry, Kizzy. And that is, I do feel like, I know that we're gonna bring EMS up, I'm certain, as a topic with our legislators. And Mike and Chief Fox and I met with a legislator, two legislators, last week, and it was very positive. So there's positive motion on EMS, but there's a lot of work yet to be done. And I don't know, it almost seems like something that it would be good eventually to get the whole council up to speed on, and just sort of, you know, what the issues are and why.
Kizzy, do you have something?
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, I know we talked about the program with Hopkins School and the city, the interim program, but just a reminder, or just think about this, employment programs for youth, I know I keep saying this, in our city, as we continue to see youth get in a lot of trouble. The incident that happened downtown this weekend, a 16-year-old girl that my niece knew is now deceased. And I think about like kids out doing things like that, just, a lot of the kids, I just think, don't really have a lot to do, and then they get caught up in making poor decisions because they just don't have a lot to do, especially maybe lower-income neighborhoods. But I want to remind us, in Minnetoka and Hopkins, we have those same children in our city. This summer, when I was campaigning, I was able to hire six kids, paying them $15 an hour. And if I was able to do that through the money I raised through my campaign, I would encourage us to do more for those children. And they were right here in our city. All of those kids that I hired were going to Hopkins School, really needed that money, and they're here. And so I just want us to really be thinking about that as we continue to talk about youth and some of the problems that we're seeing across the state. Some of those youth, matter of fact, this summer, I know two youth that was killed this summer. One of them went to Hopkins School, my daughter knew, the one that was shot in her home, and I think it sounds like maybe the family, somebody in the household knew or whatever. And then another youth that was just killed last night, not last night, a couple nights ago downtown. And so one of those kids did go to Hopkins High School. And so I just, I just want us to continue to think about our youth that's in Minnetoka, in Hopkins. And I know that's not something that the city typically do where they think about the employment program, but I know Minneapolis does it, they got the Step Up Program. There's all kinds of programs in other cities, and I just want us to start really thinking about how can we partner with the schools, partner with workforce... about, how can we partner with the schools, partner with workforce, and start trying to offer kids employment, especially as it get more and more diverse, we're having that, so, yeah.
Kizzy, thank you for that, and it brings to mind two things that I wanted to mention. One was, I got an email from a woman today, who said that she was concerned about people that she's seen by Cub Foods, and it's a woman and her children, who are panhandling there, and we hear about the panhandling complaints from time to time, and we know that if they're not, if they're on public property, they have the right to do that. But then, her take on it, and her tack was, the children with her are school-aged, and they're not in school. And what can we, as a city, do to that? And I wrote a note to Mike, and I, and Julie, I believe, and, you know, just to call attention to that, and then, you know, and then I wrote back to this woman, I said, you know, we need to work with the school district, too, because the school district really control, is in charge of truancy and things like that, not, not the city, but we still care about it, we want kids to be in school. So, I think that's one. Then, I was reading an article today, The Economist Magazine came to my house today, and I was reading an article, and it was about gun violence in the city of Boston, and the success that they have, have had at dramatically reducing the amount of gun violence in the city of Boston, and they've been very intentional, and it, you know, and they've been doing it a long time, but gun violence in Boston has dropped from a high level to a relatively low level, and it's at the lowest rate of any city in the country.
Oh, wow.
And, you know, and it's very impressive, and, you know, they've been at it a long time, but the point is, that if they can do it in Boston, they can do it everywhere. Now, we don't have a big gun violence problem in Minnetoka, but we have a big gun violence problem in the Twin Cities, and in Minneapolis, and, you know, and I just think, you know, the types of programs that they're doing in Boston may be instructive to the city of Minneapolis, but they also may be instructive in the city of Minnetoka, because we want to get, we never want to get to the point where we have a gun violence problem in our city, and there's certainly a lot of guns in our city and everywhere else, and so, I think we just have to work to challenge ourselves, because we want our city to be safe and continue to be safe, and I think some of these things, we might want to talk about ways we can get a jump on those. So, I'll be happy, I'll bring it, I'll photocopy the article and share it, and then I'll scan it in and share it with everyone, or I'll send it to Mike, and he can share it with everyone. But it's, it's very interesting, and it's worthwhile reading, so I wanted to comment on that.
Okay.
Other things, or we can end.
I would just add, I think maybe, because there are, like, with that one family, I think we've been in touch with it, because we have resources. We have our embedded social worker, we have his house, I think Julie's been
Yeah, I don't like to talk about specific cases.
Yeah.
I would say, if you get an email from somebody identifying that, we've already talked to them.
Okay.
So, there's already been outreach provided, there's already been, his house has provided services.
Good.
So, I do not like to talk about
No, about specific circumstances, I get that.
Yeah, that family is
Sorry about that.
Social media, though, so, it's probably more in-your-face than you're used to seeing, so, just know that that family is not alone.
Okay, good, thank you for that. Anyone, anything else? Thanks. Well, for all your involvement, your comments, and a good night, and I think we can call this meeting adjourned, and you can get home and watch, see how Kirk Cousins does in the second half of his football game.